Right, we'll get the meeting started and catch up with us. All this meeting to order. This is the regular council meeting, rescheduled. Now then, City Council, meeting on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, six P M. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And this is a group of citizens, one nation, one individual, they can adjust.
The Landes, please call a roll.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Phelan?
Present.
Also Member Rainville?
Present.
Also Member Alders. I just looked at him. Also Member Brian?
Here.
Also Member Lativo, I didn't see her either. A deputy clerk, Anna Johnson. Chief Deputy Bill Jacobson. Scott Van Eerst, City Administrator's presence, sir. My calls taken. Thank you. We'll move to amend or approve tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
If there are no, um, requests to making changes to the agenda, I move it as presented, though I do have a comment on the agenda, present agenda, that I would like to make at that time. On the items that are on, and it's not necessary.
So, this one, is there an agenda with this added to it?
No, it's because it's front and back, exactly, and second word. In your book.
No, but I mean on the agenda itself.
No, it's just a separate.
So, Mr. Mayor, I understand you, right, we should do part of the agendas, so?
Yes.
Okay. Do we add that under the new page on that?
New business number four? So adding, RCA code compliance, there's an RCA for code compliance policy direction, assuming there's a copy in the back?
In the front of your book.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I've got it in the front of, that's why I'm asking. Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
That would be amended to the agenda?
Yes. And so who moved? Right, right, so amended to add, RCA code compliance policy direction under new business, item four.
I'll send again.
Motion is second. Any other items for the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Most? Most carries? Alright, in public forum, so we invite those that have signed up to introduce yourself, speak loudly, because, people, they may have trouble hearing us on our little old device here. Speak loudly and introduce yourself in your address, please.
My name is Derek Lynn and I live in Ramsey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council for allowing us to speak in this public forum. The other thing I want to thank you for is inviting us into a presentation, I believe that was in February, when we were in here, it was a while ago. And the reason I'm back here tonight is we want to give you some news. Since we were here in February, we had been visiting other cities. Because you invited us in, they helped us get into other cities where we are, uh, there's a total of nine cities where we're giving that same presentation. That's our twenty-one. That's pretty good in the local town, which is, you know, fairly evenly split. Probably, we have a couple other cities that are thinking about letting us in. We presented at five, we've got four left. Uh, tonight, we're in Lindwood right now, the rest of my team is in Lindwood, we've got Anoka, Columbus, Rapids coming up. Those are just for presentations. The other news that I have for you is three cities have passed resolutions to hand count the votes, so I wanted to elaborate on that, explain that a little more specifically. On election night, you got to put the ballots in the machine, the machine tabulator counts the votes, that's the big law. But what these three cities voted to do was to extend the per post-election review. What that means is ten days after the election, they're going to send their own judges, they're going to pay for their own judges to go down to an open county. There's a, I believe it's a four-day period, and they're going to hand count the votes and make sure that they match the totals on the machine. Those four, those three cities are Ramsey, to yourself, right? They have nine precincts, they're going to hand count six of them. Um, Oak Grove went first, they've got four precincts, they're going to do four, four for four, and Ham Lake last night, just passed the resolution, they have six precincts, they're going to do one. East Bethel would be the fourth city, they promised us that they're going to pass the resolution, they have not passed it yet, they're talking about three. Another thing I want to explain, when the county does the post-election review right now, they do a random sample of a hundred and twenty-eight precincts, they sample four. So your odds of getting picked are pretty small, two out of a hundred and twenty-eight. That's in the random sample where you have to participate. What these cities says, forget about the random sample, we're going to do it no matter what, because there really is no limit on how many you can do, that's our reading of the state statute. So they're going to participate in that. When, when the county does it, they do the top two races. What these cities are saying is we're going to go all the way down, we're going to go down to the city council, I'll hold them down, everything, everything that's contested, it's not contested, it's not going to touch it. Uh, I think he's, every city is a little bit different, East Bethel said we're not going to bother with the school board, you know, like I said, Oak Grove is doing all of them. Yeah, it, it's kind of have to customize it to what makes sense to your city. If you could look at that packet real quick, there should be a picture of the flag on there. If you go on page eight, we have a public testament of what it would cost for you to man count. At your city, uh, we're showing that for just one precinct, it would be about eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. I'm going to read to you real quick, if I could, three quotes from people involved in this. Western Wolf, he's the mayor of Oak Grove, he said, nobody can confirm that the voting machine counted the ballots correctly on election basis. It is important to me as your mayor that you vote counted. Deb Musgrove, Ramsey, sorry?
We're running out of time.
Okay, I'll be done in a minute. Uh, Deb Musgrove, Ramsey City Council, we double-checked everything in our society, why not double-check our votes? And then finally, another mayor said, we spend millions in our budgets, we can afford a thousand bucks to go, to go count our votes. So that's all I got, well, the other thing is we're going to move this on, that's in the packet that he can move up. So, thank you, I have time, you guys have any questions?
Nope.
Nothing?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Evening, uh, we can show which is in Mandover, uh, member of AICD, and also election judge, and have been on the ballot board. The last time we came out, we done to you guys?
This is the different presentation from the previous one?
What's my honor?
Okay.
But the last time you came out here, we presented, uh, we were actually talking more about actually trying to do hand counting the night of the election. Since then, there's been some laws passed that we've been, that can happen. So that's why we're coming and asking about doing a, an expanded per versus trying to hand count that. I don't want to break the laws. Um, during the election, our election judges do a fabulous job the day of the election. We double-checked everything, we double-count everything, we pulled ballots out that have been unsealed, we have two people counting. We check our receipts for the ballots, two people, everything is double-checked. And then when we get onto the county, everything is double-counted. Only thing that's not double-counted is the votes. We have a machine count, they don't check. But that's why we're asking you to, instead of doing an expanded per.
And then your name again was?
Joe Richardson.
Thank you. Anybody else on the public forum? Alright. Uh, moving on, the consent agenda, Councilmember Rainville, you had something you wanted to comment on the consent agenda report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, item C, approval of second quarter financial report. Um, under the general, um, fund expenditures, it says that the farmer's market, um, went over, and that has been corrected. Um, so I just want to publicly state that the farmer's market is well within their budget, they have had two hundred dollars in expenses, which are more than covered by the vendor. Contributions for their, their space, so just wanted to clarify that.
Which page was that on, do you know?
Um, it's item C. And then it's, and then right down to the.
Same there, I knew all.
Done the first twenty-four, uh, I had to, the actual June, under expenditures, they have expenditures of forty-five hundred and thirty-two dollars, and it's truly about two hundred and seventeen, not a governmental.
That's been corrected.
That's been corrected. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
I'd like to motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second that. So we have a motion, Councilmember Brian, second from the mayor, to approve the consent agenda with that correction that was noted. On item C, uh, consent agenda consists of approval of city council meeting minutes, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, June seventeenth, work session, twenty twenty-four, July ninth, twenty twenty-four special meeting, July ninth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four work session, and July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four work session. Approval of claims and invoices received before August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And a treasures report to be provided when completed. Approval of the second quarter financial report, approval of temporary golf cart permit agreement, and road closures. Approval of the twenty twenty-five Anoka County's Bureau of Department contract, and approval to give notice to a cleaning service, sixty-day notice, and, and gave a new service at the end of that sixty-day. Alright. So, with that noted, all those in favor, the consent agenda as presented, will you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Most? Most carries? Uh, we have nothing from the engineering at this point. And so we have fire department. Uh, you see the charts that are there. Moving in the right direction time-wise, response-wise, calls for service. You mean that we actually have, uh, more under the fire category than EMS unusual? Any questions that, uh, council would like to pass on to the fire department? Hearing none, well, I'm sorry?
Just wanted to point out that we had an incident over at Nowland this weekend, and, um, the fire department came into that, and it was kind of, it was great, but someone had a heart attack. And, um, Mary Hazer actually stepped in to, um, help them, and so.
And where was this at?
At Rithlitz Saturday, and she's doing well, and so she asked that, kind of, any questions that she didn't get in from, she wants to feel better right now, and our fire department came late, but she was already responsive by now, it's N H C P R and everything, so. It's, it's kind of cool, so, anyway, but she said thanks, she wanted to say thanks to the fire department. For stepping in and helping, because she was pretty rattled.
Yeah, I, I can imagine, so thank you for that. Alright, um, and then there's a resolution. That's my Brian.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to avoid code over sending to the district act in effect of September first, two twenty twenty-four.
With consent?
Have motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Most? Most carries? Fire Department? Keep her moving. We're, we're on a roll. Um, and, and that being said, bar none is just. So, take our way, Chief Deputy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, citizens of Nowland, my name is Bill Jacobson, I serve as the Chief Deputy for the Sheriff's Office in Anoka County, and as the liaison for the city of Nowland. I do have the August thirteenth tonight, I do have a report for, actually, that's, it's the twentieth.
No.
I thought, sorry, I'm catching that, um, that's from last week, please. Uh, August twentieth report, um, which reflects activity in the city for the month. Uh, I'll start with all overall calls for service, we had a hundred and forty-two calls for service overall. And that marks eighty calls year-to-date down from last year to this year, so that's overall across the city.
What are you guys doing with all that time?
Well, you can bring that to us. In July, we had twelve calls to the Barnett facility, five of our calls, eight medicals, and nine incomplete calls. As the mayor did point out, we have seen an increase in calls at the Barnett facility, and had two recent meetings with them regarding the increasing call load and some discussions with them about being proactive at solving some of the, um, some of the problems we're facing over there with the, with their training and their retention and stuff. So we're still trying to work collaboratively with them to, to address these, but it's important that the city stays aware of our, our commitment we're having to make to bar none. And I'll just cover a few of these. Um, on the tenth, uh, seven fifty-three P M, we had a report of an assault between two residents. One resident was arrested for assault and booked at the juvenile center. On the eleventh, three residents fled from the campus and were located and returned. The fifteenth, they responded from assault report. This one was a resident assaulting a staff member, and this was a situation where the resident was trying to leave, the staff member intervened and then was assaulted. Again, that juvenile was arrested and transported to the juvenile center. The nineteenth, another assault between two residents. Dispute over personal property, one was charged for assault. Twenty-sixth at eleven oh three P M, but actually, this requires research with five residents, so they fled from the location at the same time. Uh, they were located in nearby gas station in St. Francis, four of which, you know, were cited for theft at the business. And one was charged with a financial card transaction, thought had taken a, taken a credit card from a vehicle and used it, which, um, is a felony, so I was charged, uh, with that as well. Um, those, uh, were all trespass from that business to return to bar none. And on the twentieth, that, uh, just after midnight, the responsible partner disordered the juvenile at the location. This juvenile also had to be arrested, this was for fifth-degree assault and first-degree damage to property, so that's a serious damage to property charge that either involves a significant amount of damage or a threat to public safety, in this instance, I believe it was a threat to public safety, the way that damage was being, um, inflicted on some of the campus property, so. The other calls, there are miscellaneous runway and disturbance calls. Been working closely with them, trying to get, uh, trying to get those numbers down. Obviously, their campus has been busier because they have been posting more students, more residents, because they have a new program, so. Um, I do have open lines of communication with them, and we're keeping a close eye on the poll, but I'm happy to, happy to help facilitate any conversations between the city and the, and the, and the campus there, whatever, whatever the city needs, we're willing to be partners on. Move. We'll move into some other noteworthy calls from around the city.
Before you go on to the, the bar none, I'm looking at the officers involved. Um, and, and our normal patrol is there four, five times, but it's, it's others, other officers involved. Right, are these countywide, or the, and who are, who's responding?
Mr. Mayor, you will see, uh, countywide cars, the west side countywide car will be responding there. You also see cars from St. Francis P D have assisted us there a number of times. Um, they're usually close as well, so. But as far as our cars generally, countywide cars, or if it's a, um, if the Nowland aside deputy is off on the case for trading, it'll be whichever deputy is back holding that dedicated interest.
So when, when, yeah, obviously St. Francis is aware of our situation.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming in your, you know, i- your education of anybody who's covering is familiar with the situations.
Mr. Mayor, yes, we do, um, at the whole team, we share, I share my notes from those meetings with the patrol commander, and, uh, he shares those down through the sergeant, so we know what we're responding to. You will have the TV actually, you'll, I'll turn over there.
Alright, try to interrupt him.
Under, uh, other number of incidents, on the twelfth, at one fourteen A M, responded to Wrecking Bullard in St. Francis Boulevard, and reported a crash of injuries. This involved a motorcycle, the investigation revealed the motorcycle was, sounds like taking the corner too fast and drifted across the center line there, actually struck an oncoming truck. Um, thankfully, the driver of the truck was not injured, and the operator of the motorcycle also suffered minor injuries, but not as serious as it could have been, because if you picture that, that sweeping hurt through there. Um, the motorcycle was going too fast, drifted across the center line, and sort of sideswiped the oncoming truck, so. We were thankful that that wasn't a more serious crash, because it actually could have been, and that would have meant the, uh, operator of the motorcycle was safe for not maintaining his lane. On the fifteenth, at eight thirty-seven P M, we responded to assist the Anoka Police Department with a pursuit of a stolen vehicle. This pursuit started in the city of Anoka and made its way into Nowland. Pursuit ended when the vehicle went off the roadway into a field near Nowland Boulevard and, it's like, ours like road. Then from there, the suspect did flee on foot. Thankfully, we have good partnerships with the other police departments in Anoka County, so we did get a lot of backup here to the city of Nowland to get this guy into custody. Uh, the sheriff's office sent more cars, K nine teams came up from Plume, Athens, and Fridley, that's because our K nine teams weren't working that night. And we also have, uh, Ramsey, St. Francis, and Anoka P D there, of course. Suspect was tracked by the K nine and located in a marshy area just west of the vehicle, and the K nine helped us get that young man into custody. He was booked at the Anoka County Jail on various charges employed by the police, which is a family. Then on the twentieth, at twelve forty P M, we responded to the twenty thousand block of West Fordbrook Drive and reported a loud explosion. This call came out, I saw it on the CAD screen, and it was, uh, a little concerning, because it had that kind of vibe of something serious that had occurred, maybe an explosion of some type. Deputy got there, found out that somebody set off a larger than eighty's kind of firecracker. And they hit it to it, they were cooperative, um, so the deputy issued a warning, um, I just asked them to do that, because it, of course, is concerning to the neighbors, especially on the twentieth at twelve forty P M, that's not a normal time to expect fireworks, so, um, we, uh, we addressed that with a warning this time. Talking about the sheriff's office updates, on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, four P M to seven P M is our open house, and we are uh, looking forward to inviting anyone else, um, elected and appointed officials here from the city of Nowland, residents of Nowland. It's really cool, I know, open house at the sheriff's office maybe doesn't sound super exciting, there's probably going to be a couple helicopters, we're going to have our SWAT vehicles and police vehicles, a lot of our county partners going to be there, there's going to be K nine demos, it's going to be really cool, so. Please come on and, uh, and say hi, meet us, I'll be there, I know, we're excited, big seven point, so, um, we invite everyone out, mark your calendars, and you'll see more on our social media for that. And then America had asked a little bit about what we're doing while we're actually trying to hear his whole one. And, uh, it's a fair question, and that kind of brings up the discussion of traffic enforcement in the city of Nowland. Um, we do have dedicated patrol service in Nowland for twelve hours each day. Um, and we talked about it before, during COVID, the roads were empty, speeds were way up, and people were working from home, um, and they'd get out, and they'd get out, and they turn our, our roads into racetracks, and so our resources at the time are limited, um, so we weren't making, making as many stops and sort of speed get on hand. Um, so we kind of recommitted to, to keeping our roads safe, and I'm going to comment on two cases from the weekend if I have time, um. The vast majority of the traffic stops that we make in the city, um, are resolved via warning, so we're making a lot of stops, probably issuing a lot of warnings, because a traffic stop somewhere changes behavior everywhere, because people might only see the stop, that driver was just going to stop as an effect on their behavior in the future, so. Only about eight percent of traffic stops in the city do result in a citation being issued, if you do look at the citations, um, we'll see a lot of those are for driving without insurance, or driving without a license, and those types of violations, so we work hard to educate the public by verbal or written warnings, but also there are times when we have to issue citations.
Boy, the, the, excuse me, and so the traffic stops versus traffic arrests is a citation in between those two, I mean, arrests is you, somebody went riding a patrol car?
When I looked at the, uh, when I looked at the numbers, traffic arrests are, are basically our citations, those are, those were, those were our citations are being wrong.
Okay, so, so traffic stops are, are up from two hundred eighty-nine to four nineteen?
Yes, sir.
But traffic arrests are down from sixty to thirty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Stopping more cars, um, and then receiving those citations issued, that would be, I have.
Okay.
And if I can comment, do I have time to comment on traffic safety from what?
Yes, you do.
So you may have seen in the news, we had two fatal crashes here in Anoka County. One occurred in East Bethel, that was a motorcycle crash, uh, where, um, two, two vehicle, there was a vehicle turning hot, and most, I think that was a fatal crash. Tragically, the driver operating the motorcycle was killed in that crash. It's a crash in, uh, Coon Rapids, which we worked closely on, they were working with Coon Rapids P D on that investigation. It was, uh, Coon Rapids Boulevard and Springbrook Drive, um, and i- if you see the complaint, hit the complaint in hospital, the, the driver who caused the crash is alleged to have gone through a red light, struck this vehicle in the passenger door, and showed indications of impairment, alcohol impairment. That driver was arrested and booked at the Anoka County Jail, and, uh, a passenger in the vehicle, along with five, uh, five work long, and one were, uh, child was killed. And it's horribly tragic, it's hard to read, and, um, that speaks to why traffic enforcement is involved, and I totally understand people don't like to be pulled over for the, by the police, it's not a fun experience, but studies have shown that traffic enforcement makes our roads safer. It helps us get speeds down, it helps locate impaired drivers and get them off the roadway. And, um, the consequences of unsafe driving conduct, they're all too real, we see them all the time, and it was a tragic weekend in Anoka County, so. And when I talk about traffic numbers being up, traffic stops being up, just know that we are doing it to make the roads safer, that is our goal, so.
So Chief Deputy, the, and I, I forgot to notice, what time was that last accident you're referring to, what time of day?
The, uh, one in Coon Rapids? The early evening, or if I recall, I mean, Sunday early evening, to check.
Is, is there, uh, additional charges, because the person was underage?
There will be, yes, so, so essentially, are you talking with the victim, or the?
No, the, the driver that's charged was, as I read the report, a twenty-year-old.
Yes.
In a truck, three fifty, pulling a trailer.
Large vehicle, but you can't stop very quickly, and, um, in that instance, that's something we can use the, uh, to upcharge, but in the charges that were issued, that, that is such a minor charge that the criminal vehicle, the homicide charges are, will probably stand on their own, but yes, it could be charged. Um, that could be added as a charge for drinking underage.
That is, is tragic, and, and so we, we appreciate the attention to the stops, and I'm sure nobody likes being stopped, um, but, but looking at the citations uh, versus the warnings, you know, I, I, I think that's a reasonable thing, when that went out. Obviously, if people don't understand, we're not like cities that have administrative triangle, we get all the funds, this is not something that's a moneymaker for Nowland in any, any way at all. And, but we do appreciate our roads being safe. Councilmember Flatt?
So can you do pull people over, you can tell if they've gotten warning signal?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, we can, we have a, we have an in-house record system that will show basically if they've had contact contacts either by plate or by name, uh, in fact, I was on my way to work today, driving through the city of Columbus, and a vehicle was, I mean, I understand it's a New York squad car, but the, this car was so close to me, had to be less than a car. And then passed me on the shoulder, on the right shoulder, very much. And then I paced this vehicle at seventy-five miles an hour. And that kind of driving conduct, so it breaches that, that's how fatal crashes happen, that is, that could have triggered a chain of events, that could have led to a fatal crash. Well, thankfully, I stopped that driver, he got a citation. Um, but that is important to try to change that type of conduct, I mean, ten over, yeah, that's a violation, but this guy's going twenty over, passing on the shoulder, just being aggressive, it's, uh, it's dangerous, and especially, I'll speak as a father with young kids. Young kids do not understand the consequences of mistakes while driving, driving too fast, looking at their phones, it's, um, it, it, it can really get out of hand before they realize, unfortunately, so.
Mayor? It's later. So both of these incidents, uh, Chief Deputy is talking about, I forwarded in terms of both of you, so you guys can look at them, but one of them, Chief, that one that was sent out today, that got sent out today, does not have the time of day, and it's, you can provide me with it, and I can get it, look through the council. Got the rest of this stuff, but it doesn't call all the time of day, it was just the main.
call off what time of day it was, just the main.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. If you need it.
I don't.
Okay, it's up to the council if you need it.
It'll, it'll be easy for you to follow.
All right, council, anything else with Chief Deputy? Well, Flattabell?
Um, thank you for sending that information, it was very helpful, and I was able to see the changes with that, so, thank you very much.
Good, I'm glad to help, and in fact, I uh, not, not all we deal with a lot, but we do deal with it from time to time, so, um, I, I did my best to answer your question from recall, and I was happy to see, once I looked up the statute. I always check the statute, make sure you're right.
All right, anything else from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, nothing's been planning and zoning this month? Administrator update on the interviews for the position of fire chief?
Uh, Mister Mayor, council, I got uh, an update here for you and a couple of quick things that just came in today, if you'd indulge me, the update on the interviews, um, for the fire chief position, uh, went well, our recommendation is removing uh, two of those individuals, or we interviewed three, two of those individuals are looking to move forward. Uh, I did talk with a couple council members on, on our personnel committee about a date for next week, and we have to talk again, that date is gonna have to change, it looks like, because one of the individuals has a funeral on their schedule for that day, so I will talk to the two of you after the meeting, if that would be good there, just to kind of give you an update, but uh, looking for next week to have second round of interviews uh, done and completed, and then we'll move forward from there.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Flattabell?
Um, so I wanted to tear up something from interviews, because I assumed that from that, and I and correctly wrong, I didn't have a chance to go back to the primary news, but as council I thought the council members were going to be in on those interviews, and so I'm trying to figure out was something changed from last meeting when we had that, when that was directed?
Not that I'm aware, but the interviews proceeded, the screening, uh, and interviews proceeded without the personnel committee involvement, we were given an opportunity after the fact to look at the applications, as they were in, the ones that were screened out and the ones that are moving forward. But this will be our first involvement when the interviews are set up next week.
You're, you're
Mister Mayor?
Agree with that, I mean, is that your agreement too, Dan?
Then, then there was going to be a first round of interviews and then we would be involved.
Okay, and that was agreed upon by council last time, um, at the meeting? Because I'm, my notes say completely different, so that's why I'm questioning that.
I think that the only way is to go back and look at the the video. Because, if, if we're recalling it different here, you'd have to go back to the video. I didn't see that in the mix.
Mister Mayor. I remember it as the chief and city administrator are gonna look at them first, and then bring, go through and, and rank them and then bring those that are ranked high enough to interview for, with the personnel committee. Which is what is next, that's what I'm reading.
Yeah, that's why I'll have to go back, because there was a discussion, because, because I remember that being part of the discussion, that if people were ruled out before the personnel committee got a chance to see any of that, that would have changed our last decision four years ago significantly. But I know there were discussions, I don't see what else was resolved, and I'm like, what, check the video? Because I know there was a discussion, doing it that way, Councilmember Rainbow remembered. And I remember having a discussion as to disagree, I don't know what the current.
I don't know if that, that's a problem, I don't know, I, I have directed council differently. So I wanted to know if I missed something, and I just have to go back and check, but I haven't had time to watch the video. So I was curious if you heard differently, this one question to council. So, and maybe, and you said you did, so I'm gonna go back and check, okay, thank you.
All right, Mister Mayor.
So later. So, and part of that whole process, we did talk about, um, both you being able to come in and look at the package, which you both took me up on that. And I don't know if you're looking to be looking at that, uh, as far as the camera goes, but you're also gonna want to look at the email that was sent out with the process that Chief Schitt sent out, that's the one that specified on there specifically, who was doing all, at what time. I sent that out to the both of you on the personnel committee, heard nothing back, so we move forward with that. Which we stated exactly what the problem such for using, right?
Okay, I didn't get that, because I'm on the other personnel committee, but I'm not on this, so that's, so that's why I would not.
Well, and, and to be fair, if, if there's a process identified like that, that probably is something should have gone to. If we're changing how we've done it in the past, but, that being said, until videos looked at, there, there is a difference of understanding, and we can't resolve it. At this point, we will know, we will discuss after the meeting potential dates for interviewing the two finalists that presented to this point.
That'd be great, appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, two quick notes, I just wanted to bring up that, uh, we have Nancy Brian coming in at eleven o'clock on Thursday. She's gonna kind of take a look at kind of our operations there at the office to see uh, since she's available, has a little time right now, if she might be able to come in and see how her skillset might be able to help us in the in the office, as we're going through, um, what we are right now. So Nancy will be coming in at eleven A M. If it's something she's interested in, and we think will be a good fit, then we'll be bringing back councils to talk a lot further, uh, what my ne- next steps might be, or at that point, so just so you're aware, that, that just happened this afternoon. And then the other thing that I just wanted to bring up today that was brought to my attention, and I just probably need some clarification around it, but a staff member received a text message today um, letting them know that, uh, they will not be receiving, we're receiving a phone call back from, uh, Nowland Nursery about doing the memorial park out here, and I'm just curious on why council would call off staff, uh, for doing something that I've asked staff to do, and to me, that would be giving staff work direction. And I'm just looking for clarification on why that would be, and why, if that was something that someone was concerned with, wasn't run through the
Speed, and I can say that, because according to our last meeting, we were talking about what council did, uh, what, as a council member, I was to do the memorial garden, that, that came up, so I have been working on that, so when I went over there, there was no direction that council gave to staff as to working on that. So.
We've had multiple approvals for me to be working.
Excuse me, one, one person at a time.
So I went over, I was doing that, and was looking over at, um, I was taking, I took samplings and everything, I went over there, and I was surprised that, that was happening, so I just said, I've got this, um, I can read you the text, that's not a problem, um, I'm sure you've seen it, but I was just stating that they won't be contacting, that I've been in contact with them, and I'll be working with them, so it wasn't giving staff direction, it was simply saying that, this is how, what my understanding was, is that I was supposed to be doing this, and so, um, and the plan, and I'm presenting a plan to council once I get all those people, but there wasn't any there's no hurry that on it, is basically what it is, so as my understanding is. So.
Mister Mayor.
Mister Mayor.
So, um, we were, multiple times, have had discussions on the memorial park over the summer about moving forward and what was gonna cost. Set aside. Councilmember Flattabell is correct, we have reached out to her, um, in the past and asked her, and as we weren't getting updates, we decided that we wanted to try to um, see what it would cost, no different than I have Joe getting us prices on rocks, I'm getting prices on what a new sign would cost, so we can put together a proposal to bring to council and see where we're gonna be, if Councilmember Flattabell can get us numbers on that, that's great, but when things are stated that, um, we weren't directed to work on this, and that staff has enough stuff on their plate not to worry about it, um, that I believe is my responsibility, and if I've directed staff to be able to get the numbers as we all working on it that, that we would continue on with that. I don't believe it's a correct statement, when it's stated that, um, we weren't directed to work, we've been working on that, and directed to work, and I'm getting numbers throughout the summer, so.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Flattabell?
So maybe what it is that, as my understanding in our last council meeting, we were talking about it, I received a message asking me about having people do stuff at Memorial Garden from staff. And I had stated at that point, if you haven't been directed by council to do so, then don't worry about it. And therefore, it was canceled, they didn't do, um, what they thought they were gonna do at Memorial Garden. And then it came to council that next week, and we had a discussion about it, and I said I would take care of it, that I was going to be working on it, so I think we're misstepping here as far as what direction was given, what direction wasn't given. So that's from council, so I think that has to have more clarity then.
Okay.
So.
Where does it stand right now?
Well, I can tell you this, when I was over there today, um, I'm putting together three things, but we can probably, lowest, we could probably do a hundred to five hundred dollars. Um, in my estimate, because when I was talking to Bree today, she was told to get an estimate to take, rip out the entire thing. Um, in talking to Bree, most of the front can be completely salvaged, she said the plants, if you want to save stuff, she goes, everything's in really good condition, except for the back. So, I said, let's not go further, let's see what we can do, so we're not spending a huge amount of money. And if those can be salvaged, and they're fine, it's great. I have talked with the people from Garden Club, and they, um, are willing, people are willing to do it, I just wanted to talk to Mary more about getting donations, because I have to be careful on how to do that, so, um, I was gonna contact you more on, yeah, so, more on that, and how to do that. Um, but basically, we can go of three ways, we can have it all ripped out and completely put new things into it, we can save the be, we can trim up the front, and, um, make the bushes smaller, and we can take out, um, the trees in the back, which is what Bree recommended, and I thought so too, that was one of the things when I went over and looked at it. That's, that's fine. Um, and then she conferred with me that, that, that was an easy thing, the juniper on the bottom is in beautiful condition, and, um, some people might not think so, because it's a different plant.
So, if I can, to get this short, we're not gonna resolve it tonight, but, but the understanding is that the council members working on this. And so, in coordination of that, I think the, the, the question that had come up previously is, there was some money set aside for, for part improvements, but there was no specific designated what improvements?
Right.
Or, um, what the plan would be, this being one of those, the other would be looking at pavilions in Twin Lakes Park. So I think that, the, the key thing is, you're gonna work together with staff, put some nu- numbers together, that still would need to be approved by council.
Right.
There is a plan, and this is a cost of the plan, and you're saying that we have a large number here that rip everything out and start afresh, or we have a more reasonable number down here uh, and the council can decide how to do that, so nobody's authorized to spend any additional monies until the council's seen a plan and approves that. Is that what the council's understanding of this is? Okay, and I'm seeing all knotted heads, so.
And when you say additional monies? Because the money that is put aside for that is thirty thousand dollars, and I don't think we have to spend that much.
And, no, I, I think a- any monies from the public coffers, until there's a plan agreed upon by council, shouldn't that be?
Okay.
Mister Mayor. This thing is, so, I see some knotted heads, is that agreement from the council? So, so let's, let's make that noted, that specifically the council said not to be spending those monies, that while they, there were capital plans put in place, we haven't seen the plans as to how to spend that money yet. But the authorization to spend that money depends on the approval of the plans presented.
Well, I hope to have that done, I'm sorry, Mister Mayor.
So that's, that's specific action from the council, motion on that, or is it clear enough?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so Councilmember Flattabell?
So basically, what I'm trying to do is put a plan together, I'm hoping to get it into the council by September, um, to kind of put it more together, as far as what three different things we could do, and that council would agree on one of them. And in the meantime, I will reach out to Mary to talk to her about how.
Okay. Did you want to say something else?
Yeah, just need clarification for staff, and what, what part of staff, you know, plan to this, then are, do we still continue to move forward? Uh, Councilmember Flattabell was talking about one piece, and we talked about monuments, we talked about, um, I was given very clear instructions that the larger bushes that were there should be removed, they don't want to put Christmas lights on those bushes any longer, that came out of council, um.
Who, who said that?
Uh, that was a conversation you and I had. And that we needed to, that we could work with the lines publicly wanted to, but didn't want to see those Christmas lights on those bushes for another year, if we could do anything to make that happen.
Okay.
Other thing on that was the monuments, the rocks inside there, um, the taller bushes that were in there. Why do I feel like I'm missing what I was?
So, 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 suffice, suffice to say, and, and, and I apologize I see Natalie agreed that I said something, I didn't know I wanted the trees ripped out, I, I mentioned before, the way the lights were on them. Didn't necessarily look like a Christmas tree, but, but I don't know, but I think the, the understanding is as Councilmember Flattabell said, working with nursery, it says, these are good trees, but they need trimming, or these are dead trees and need to be pulled out. Um, I would like to see whatever Councilmember Flattabell has done to work with staff, to see what you guys have done, and say, okay, what's this total package, if we're replacing, and we're talking about river rock, we're talking about boulders, should we be talking about? But, um, if, if there's something that the council designates Councilmember Flattabell to work with staff on that, then that makes sense to come back with it.
But I need clarification, Mister Mayor, are you looking at a new sign there?
I have not heard anything.
Are you looking? Okay.
I mean, I, see, these are, these are some of the things where we need specific directions, I, I vaguely recall Councilmember Rainbow saying that the trees are such, you can't redesign, and the sign may be outdated, you might have said something about that. But it, it, it breaks down to, is that direction versus general comments? And that's, that's why we need to understand a plan that says it could be all the way from starting fresh to refreshing what we have and replacing uh, you know, uh, river rock and the sign, you know, I mean, what's at least to the most, what's that look like, and that's what we've been operating without a plan that says we're gonna do good things, and by the time we get it, there's a lot invested into it when it comes to council. Um, that may be not the direction that, that we are hoping to go.
Yeah, Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, that's exactly what we were doing, was putting together a plan to be able to come forward with the council. Okay, I look at this, um, from whatever it would take, giving options, if you want a rock, then want a rock, if you want a new sign, don't you want a new sign, do you want new greenery in there, do you not want new greenery, that's what we've been working on, Joe has a piece of it, I have a piece of it.
And suffice to say, we've asked Councilmember Flattabell to work with you on that, to pull it forward, we're not gonna resolve it here tonight.
Right, but I'm, I'm, I'm worried, Mister Mayor, that in these conversations we have as a council, we're given direction to be able to get a plan and put it together, I don't see this any different than go get an estimate to asphalt the basketball court and get estimates and work with the contractor to get the estimates, and then bring it back to, bring it back to council for approval to be able to spend the money. I look at the memorial park the same way, what is it gonna take to be able to screw that up and do it? Get the numbers pulled together, bring it back to council, either approve or not, because we haven't spent a dollar on this yet, just spent some, spent some of our resources on?
No, but I, I understand that, but until I heard this tonight.
Yeah.
Where the if I understood what you said, right, the nursery was saying, you know, what it would take to start over. Not, what would it take to clean up what you hear, what, what's the minimum to make this look really good, and the maximum? And, and when we had a discussion previously, there was an understanding that there was up to thirty thousand dollars in park funds that could be used over there, and fifty thousand that could be used in the other. Um, so the idea was not to say, let's use all thirty thousand, it's what's the minimum to make this look really good, and what's the maximum? Um, not to exceed thirty thousand. So I I think that's the the clarification. Let's look at the scale and say. Um option A is this, option B is this, and option C is this. And knowing that there's no more than thirty thousand dollars. That was put in a capital plan last year for this. So I would say similar thing in Twin Lakes Park, if you were looking at pavilions, is it patching roofs or replacing building? Yep. Replacement is here's up to fifty thousand dollars. I mean, uh restoration is somewhere over here.
And that's being worked on too, and I'll just drop the mirror, not trying to back and forth, but there was no intentions of us looking at anything to. Spend up to thirty thousand, thousand.
So I have a question on on your item B here. Nancy Bryan.
Which one is, okay.
Is is a council member's wife. Um is there an opening saying she's coming in Thursday to see how her skill set might fit in the city office? What what are we looking at?
To help us out. Well, one of our staff members is out of the office.
Okay, so this is a a temporary situation to fill in for the person who's out for a while.
That is the plan.
I just didn't know what skill set we were looking at.
Yeah, I just. Just don't know if it's good fit or not yet until we get in and kind of explain some of the things that we're looking for. And she uh agreed to be able to come in at eleven o'clock on Thursday. Just kind of take a look at it and see if she could be some, of some help. So I just don't want the council blindsided her.
So the duty we were talking about is insisting with the person who's going to be out for a month.
Yes, yes.
And that understood by the council?
That's all I have for administrative updates.
Alright, thank you. Alright, new business, project manager position moving forward. RCA here. And this is from the administrator. Would you like to present?
Yeah, I mean, I I won't read the whole thing to you. It's all in there, but basically my recommendation to the council would be at this point. With our existing uh project manager uh taking on another full time or taking on another position. Um she had minimal hours that were able to be designated to continue to work on. Uh what she has there, the only thing that she has been working on recently and to date is the. Um personnel policy, um some of the stuff that came out of the last night's meeting. Some of the DOT, the CDL, all that kind of stuff is coming back to me. There was information that was presi- uh presented. Uh last night for the first time that I wasn't privy to. There's been uh very little communication back and forth. Uh we're still waiting on a month's worth of time sheets. Uh I'm just getting the impression that the minimal hours that the project manager be able to put forward towards this is. Not beneficial at this point and um some of the stuff that's coming out um. Her and I are not talking about. It's just coming out of Minnesota cities and and is is a recommendation, like I said, I'm hearing for the first time. I don't believe at this pace, we may get two more meetings of it. Uh her contract is going to end on October thirtieth. My recommendation is that we um cancel our services uh with our project manager. And the fallback time would be to be able to get exactly what we've worked on from phase one, from the very beginning of this. All the way to where we are right now. So um we can pick it up from there and continue to work to uh get to the end of it. And my recommendation would be that I could work with the city um attorney to be able to. To finish that. The city attorney has shared with me on numerous occasions and conversations that this is what he specializes in and this is what he could do. Just to give you kind of an idea, the money that we have spent on paying a project manager to be able to work on the personnel policy. We would be able to pay our city attorney at his hourly rate, a hundred and fifty-five hours of time just spent on working on that personnel policy. And he believed that we would be able, we would be completed and we would have been able to do it in the fraction of the time that he'd been spending. So at this point, my recommendation would be is that we shift gears to finish that personnel policy. And that we would cancel services with our project manager going forward.
So you're saying that the information we received last night, you didn't have two weeks ago and we got it?
So I can tell you it was in the packet, but there is very little communication. When I when I send information out to her and request things. Um we don't get the information back. We don't get it in a timely fashion. There's emails that I'm still waiting for responses on. Natalie sends out emails that we just haven't got responses on. We've asked for time sheets. I I. I don't want to speculate on what's going on, but I think the new position she has is taking up her time. And I just don't see, there's no office time. She's isn't in the office any longer. There's no communication or dialogue between the two of us. Um we didn't necessarily put this in place. For me to be able to just get the information when we're getting ready for the packets. We normally we would have dialogue and we'd have conversation going forward. And and that isn't happening anymore.
So so what would change? I mean, if if she's simply providing legal um requirements and research. With the league, I mean, I, you know, our attorney is is two hundred, two twenty, two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, depending on which charge we get. Um and we're talking about ten hours a week for the next eight weeks. I don't. I don't see, based on what I saw last night, why wouldn't you done by the end of um end of uh October? And you're talking about thirty-five hundred dollars at ten hours a week, if the attorney has it to give. And that's twenty-two hundred to two hundred uh twenty-five hundred dollars a week. I I don't understand that being a reasonable thing and to have the city attorney working on that at his rate. Um I I guess if if there's there's not communication, somehow we had this packet. In a couple of weeks. And we were asked to look at it and consider it, so I don't understand what would have changed. Other than what we talked about last night. I mean, obviously, there were some things that that the council had some questions on, but most of it was pretty straightforward. We got through it and. In a lot of time, so I I'm I'm not sure. I I guess I'm going to leave this up to the 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 council because uh. I'm not going to vote on it anyways.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rainville.
Uh for the second, um I would move um that we. Also approves the RCA, which proves thanking the council, the project manager for a time. Request a detailed list of everything that's been completed for the personnel policy along with documentation to forward to the city administrator. Once provided to the city administrator, they will work with the attorney Ruby to review and complete. Then have a second weekend in discussion.
Anyway, a motion, Councilwoman Rainville, um and send him to Councilmember Aldous. Discussion ensues.
So, Mr. Mayor, um I have had a conversation briefly with Scott on this and and he did share with. Um me that the attorney is saying that with the expertise that they have. Let me back up. Genevieve has done a good job, but what she has done is she's had to research everything. Because it was not um it it was something new to her. And and she's done a good job. I don't, that's not an issue, but we paid for. Learning and the attorney and their his staff already have. The information they've worked with with their other cities. So in order to tweak it for now, then it would take less time. For what is what is left and for him to review what we've done, it would take less time. In the long run, and we would have a finished project, might take them.
Saying just, you know, for the record, we were given before the break in March. We're given a list of all the other activities that were being done by the project manager. Subsequent to that, when when the project manager came back, that scope was narrowed to just the policy. We also have found that the research she was doing educated legal Minnesota cities, things they didn't even know about. Though I I'm not sure where, because the attorney gets his training from the legal. Where that would go. Um the other concern I have is um. Obviously, we still have to go through whatever the attorney comes back with. But I do get concerned when we when we turn too much of our city over to professionals that say, here's how every other city is doing it. And if they come in and say, here's here's the template from every other city for the policy manual. Um we have seen in in this summer in particular, sometimes what our professionals bring in from other cities don't really work that well for now then residents. So I don't know what the different difference will be, but I would say that the entire entirety of the pay for the project manager. Has not been simply on this. And and our our discussions last fall, really way late because everybody was involved in. The emotional discussion on days one, it took a lot longer than should have. This, I thought actually went pretty well. The only thing holding this up is. Us having a meeting. This information was ready weeks ago, but we had to wait till we had a meeting and it went very well. Anyway.
Mr. Mayor. I believe that, my belief, Mr. Ruby gets his education in it from. Areas other than just legal Minnesota cities. All that Genevieve brought to us was from the legal Minnesota cities. Um that I I I think that my I, my feeling is that we should prove this, let the city administrator work with with Ruby. Get get from Genevieve what we need to receive as far as in the council. Um get her final pay payroll in and and move this to the city attorney.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Brat.
Um I'm just trying to find out, you know, what's the most efficient way that we're going to be able to get. Through the rest of this phase two. I completely understand that we had other things that we were were done and completed as well, but. I just don't know. I just don't know what the pace we're going at. We're going to be able to get through phase two. Um by the end of October and um if if there's a more efficient way to to get this wrapped up and moving on. And that's what the, that's what was being proposed when I at least open to discussing it, so we can, so we can get this to a conclusion and. So I understand there are some, there are some differences that that may be reflected and need to be adjusted. To make it fit for now then. Um I guess my one question for administrative later is. Are you expecting then that Bob will be presenting this to us or this, our attorney, or would this be something that you would be?
I I think it could be both ways. It it could be a combination of both or it could be myself. What the recommendation would be is that we would finish up personnel policy, bring what the remainder of it is. Have have along what we already done, what the remainder of it is, and then come back to council. One more time to go through and ask questions if we need to take it back if we could. Um that that was. The conversations that were had uh to bring it back whenever then is completed. So we're done. We we're ten months into this right now. We have about two more months to go and I I firmly believe. When I went back and took out my notes, that I don't think we're going to have this wrapped up. We have one more meeting scheduled and we might have time, maybe for one more.
We have a meeting in first September and we got to the end of October.
Look at the gaps in between the meetings that we've been doing.
Well, and again, there was there was a required time off because of the way the the job was structured. And there were multiple things other than policy in that first six months.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think we're arguing any of that. I think that it's like, what's the best way forward? The recommendation is, is. Let's wrap up what we got, fill the roof for the rest.
Hey, to do, would you say that and not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars?
Mr. Mayor.
Because right now, if it's ten hours a week, ten weeks, that's thirty-five hundred dollars. Can the can the attorney do it more efficiently in in less than thirty-five hundred dollars? And if we're going to pay two twenty, two fifty, um he's got less than twenty hours to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Flattable.
Um so I agree, I I agree with finding the most efficient way, but I also agree with fact that. We have something to do in now then and we have passed over a lot of things to our experts. And now we're paying the cost of that in many ways. Um. And so our experts don't always follow what residents need or want and don't always follow what the council wants. And we have to fix that in many ways. And so and some of it is from when the city was incorporated. So I mean, it's just. Because of, not because of anything, maybe people did wrong. Some things were wrong, but it's just. It's still we're growing and learning and all. So because of that. I I tend to say, hey, you've got to, we represent the residents. And that's what's hard for me is that when we send everything over, we don't always know what's happening until something. Something or we have to meet again and we have to meet with residents because they're not getting what they want or what they need. Or it's just a disagreement and I think it could be easier. So I tend to agree in this case with um. What the mayor has said about that. And so and on the other hand, efficiency is one thing, but. It's a whole lot more money that we may be spending when we're coming to the end anyway. So I guess in my mind, I'd rather wait a month or two. And get done to the end of the contract and then and then do it because. We don't know how efficient we can be and by bringing in our lawyer, that's going to be a lot more money, a lot more money. Because it's not just presenting to the council, but it's everything that he sees. And some of those bills are quite spending, so. I'd rather go with the least amount since we've already got a contract and it's almost coming to an end anyway.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Flaner.
So hearing all that and I can appreciate where you guys are coming from, but it's always been our practice here. Once this personnel policy would be done. It's going back to, it would go back to our attorney for review at a point to make sure that it keeps us out of hot water or anything that we may have done right there. So um as far as the thirty-five hundred dollar comment that was being made, um it it. You know, you can look at it however you want to look at it. I look at it as we're ten months, we may not have it done in twelve months. And in talking with the attorney, if we would have been engaged with attorney maybe, and this is hindsight and this, I'll take responsibility for this. This is something that our project manager has worked on since day one. This was the one, if you remember, where we weren't going to hire anybody until we had. A personnel policy, the first part of that personnel policy done. So this project manager has been working on this probably basically since the day. I'm not going to dispute the fact that during her first six months, there were other things that she was working on, but there were, there were nothing to the level of this. They were quick. I mean, there were street signs and and or excuse me, city signs and 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 different things like that. Um so. Going forward, I just thought it it would be a good time to be able to take a look at that. Probably wouldn't be having this conversation necessarily. Other than a few things have been brought up to me, but I think. When she had a conversation with me and Councilmember Rainville was in there, that she was taking a different position. I shared it there and I was open and honest that uh we have to take a look and see if this this minimal time that she's able to put into it still. Makes sense and still works with what we were looking at. I assessed it. I looked at it, took everything into consideration. I thought long and hard about it and my recommendation is actually I shared with you tonight because of the research.
So it it doesn't make sense to finish out a contract and get as far as you can and if you're sectioned too short, finish up returning?
Not from what I've been looking at, if that was wrapped to that, you should have seen what it was.
Yeah, it was. You know, I'm just saying that um again, the only thing that's been holding it up right now is is. Meeting with the councils, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rainville.
I believe we will get a, we'll get a good prod- pro- project out of the, out of the attorney. It's his, his experience in it. It'll take him much less time. I don't believe setting a dollar amount is appropriate in my books. Um I've never known Bob to um take advantage of anything. Um when we've given them some, given him something. This is not to to Councilman Rick Flattable um. This is not, this this project, personnel policy doesn't affect the residents. The cost of doing it does, yes, but the policy itself is geared toward our employees. Um and I would call the question.
Mr. Mayor.
Flattable.
I I'm not saying that he is, just to know, I wanted to state it. I was not saying that he would take advantage of us. And I can just say, again, I'm just, I have talked to numbers and it's that that sometimes that's my concern is. Sending everything over without input is is concerning to us.
And and to your point on the the setting a limit, we know what it would cost right now. And to say, Bob, we're not assuming that the attorney would take advantage of this. But he's just gonna charge us what he charges us. If it takes more than twenty hours, fifteen hours, um, it's gonna cost the residents a lot more. So unless this is something and the fact that we don't even know where we stand on this, um, we don't know how much is left. We're we're giving a blank check to an attorney. And we do know a fixed cost right now. So the question's been called. And so uh, all those in favor of the RCA is presented here, the motion is presented, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Uh. Next item, accepting donation from a generous member of our community to purchase a heavy duty navy blue twenty six foot tarp. I I will uh, make a motion to accept the donation.
Okay.
I have it accepted. Uh, we have motion in a second, motion from mayor, second from councilor Flattable, our discussion. Did that generous person want to say anything or? Is this is this something that will be done this year?
Yeah, the the the, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The um, plan is that the work on the field to put the workers in and rework and now the workplace are gonna be starting um, the end of August here going into September, so that if that gets um, accepted tonight, um, we can get it ordered tomorrow so that it have a tarp so that it can be on there. Um. So it's less likely that all this work that we're putting in the field will be will be destroyed by the elements and they can be out there over the winter except.
So we're same can uh, we normally have fireworks launched out there. Like that part be pulled for that day.
Probably want to, so we don't have to.
Uh huh. So will that is it? I'm I'm guessing because it's relatively easy to roll off the games.
If it's here, it should just be.
Okay.
It might it might not even be here yet depending on, I mean, they said three to four weeks, so.
Okay.
Possible. Be here at times. I mean, I just use regular old people tarp just any time.
Any other discussion? Saying and hearing none, all those in favor of accepting this donation, they signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So there will be a uh, a resolution to add effect so we can go over council accepted that. And we didn't twist anybody's arm.
What's the thing that I was putting together?
No, I'm just saying normally there'll be a resolution or a motion. We'll have a resolution and going approval. All right, um, next, we've had a request. Uh, our state representative Paul Nabatney, who represents our city of state legislature, has been selected as League of Minnesota City's legislator of distinction for twenty twenty four. Uh, the league's board of directors recognizes a total of twenty five legislators this year, sixteen house members, nine senate members for their actions and leadership on a wide variety of legislative issues of importance to cities across our state. And so we've been asked to read this letter uh, from the league uh, at our next meeting. Uh, dear Representative Nabatney, on behalf of the league's eight hundred and thirty nine member cities, I want to thank you for your efforts this past legislative session and to recognize you as a League of Minnesota Cities twenty twenty four legislator of distinction. The league's staff and member city officials appreciate your accessibility and your consultation with us on legislated legislation impacting our cities. Specifically, the league appreciates your helping to secure bipartisan passage legislation to clarify the authority and role of school resource officers. League staff appreciates your work on behalf of cities and look forward to working with you in the future on issues impacting local units of government. Our members know that to be successful in serving our common constituents, state and city officials must work together as partners to reach solutions that meet unique needs of rural, suburban and urban communities across Minnesota. City leaders also understand that without the support of legislators, legislative leaders like you, this state local partnership would not be possible. To acknowledge your contribution last session, mayors of each city in your district, receive notification of your recognition. Press release will be issued to the media. City officials and league staff look forward to continuing to work with you in the future. Justin Miller, city administrator of Lakeville, president of League of Minnesota Cities. So thank you to Mr. Nabatney for his efforts and and it was an important thing to get the school resource um, officers resolved, so.
After much of those information on the on the zone issues that we ran into.
Yeah, he was he was quite instrumental in the housing um, issue that we were challenged with this last year, so. Um, he was very aware of now then's dilemma with the Met Council trying to repeal our exemption from the Met Council. And so he was instrumental in helping fight back on that as well. So we do thank him. Um, cannabis is an old business, so we have code compliance next.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Randall.
Um, there's an RCA feeling of compliance. At this time, we're not doing anything with that. And that is causing difficulties with staff and contention in certain areas. We've had discussion prior to staff had been working with um, our consultants to put together a proposal to bring back to us. We told them to stop that. Um, I believe we need to get back on the wheel and get it run. Um, so I'm the city council director, city administrator, who worked with the city attorney, the planner and the building official to complete the process they previously started regarding code compliance and report back to council with a policy for discussion.
Second, so we have a motion from councilor Randall, second from council member Brian, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Brian.
I think I our concerns at the time was that we had at least some semblance of a compliance policy anyways. And um, there was some concern that um, that may or may not be completely um, we worked and and not. Just um. Working with the less working with the residents as more of a demanding about houses. So I just I want to encourage that if we haven't been in a, I think we were, but I don't remember at the time that we continue that we look to incorporate the current call policy that we have for compliance and see how that fits into what um, what Rum River could do so that we can can have something that we can work with. And um, go move forward.
So so my concern, and it kind of goes back to what council member Flattable said on the last item, is we we're looking at an attorney at two twenty, a planner at one point five, um, a building official at ninety five plus. So every hour, I I looked at what's happening with our residents this summer. And and we're getting bills that are in the tens of thousands of dollars that these people are are having to pay for professionals that aren't even including them into discussion. And my concern is we're gonna be paying it's, let's go low, two twenty, one one twenty, that's, we're gonna be paying four hundred plus dollars an hour for this group to get together and do something, but none of us in the council have any idea what they're doing and none of them have come to us and saying, what do you want us to do? I'm looking at this list that came with the packet here and the the limited number of things here, there's a couple of things that say code compliance, but um, there's some of these things that aren't even violations or some of these things that I'm not sure if it will even fit into a code compliance deal. When we talked about this at the budget meeting the other night, was what's, how are we gonna pay for this? Well, the cost of these all working together, having not gotten any idea what the council was looking for for our residents. Um, you're having people saying in other cities, this is how we issue um, citations. In other cities, this is how we do this. Other cities, we we take all these ordinances and make them nuisance ordinances. And then we can enforce them. When I asked how this is gonna get paid for, well, this is just gonna be paid for on budget. And if there's citations, that will get paid for, um, that activity will get paid for by the citations. And I don't, I I personally don't want us to get into a situation where the way we have to cover our costs is to start issuing citations to people. And 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 so when this first came up, you know, a couple of months ago, I said, where's the list of things that are so critical and burning down? If you look at the the list here, um, it goes back to January, um. Bombs and booms have been shaking this house. I'm not turning that over to code compliance. I'm not asking somebody to go out there. I mean, which which of these things on here would have actually fall under Rum River going out and following up on?
Mr. Mayor.
And hang on. The uh, um, we have some somebody recently, people are saying there's I U P violations. Is that something that would fall under a code compliance issue? Or we're saying if you violate an I U P, you lose your I U P. It's pretty straightforward. What does the I U P think? Here's the conditions. You're not meeting them. You turn it over to the prosecuting attorney. But but we're we're looking at making potentially a a system here by people that don't live in our city that haven't asked what the council's looking for in a system like this. To go up with something that we can then have a discussion afterwards and say, yes, we just spent X hundreds of thousands of dollars on this and it's not what we're looking for. It it would seem to me to to get this off of center would be sit down and say, what is we're looking for? Which is what we talked about doing back in March. What is it we would like to see those ordinance be and then give direction rather than receive direction from outside interest as to how we should be implementing this in now then. And so as I look at this list, I'm not sure which of these would even fall under this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Randall.
I don't think any anybody ever stated that what's on this list would go to a code compliance officer. Some of those questions are answered within the state. So look at the ones that are issues on CUPs or zoning violations. In the past, our city planner has done that. Our existing city planner doesn't do that. Staff doesn't have the expertise in some of those areas, and so we need somebody to do it. If we pulled this off in March and and you didn't like the discussions that occurred in March, we're now in office, we could have presented something called a special meeting and we could have had a special meeting with them. We didn't do that. That wasn't done. So I volunteered in the office a couple of days last week and it was obvious people are upset that we aren't doing anything. There's things that have been on the books for a long time. We need to get a process. I believe Scott started that process, understanding, I believe what council wants is that our rules and regulations are adhered to. And he was trying to work through with our consultants to come up with a policy to present to council. There may be tweaks when we get it. Happens when people present things, but right now we're not doing anything and that would be a service to our residents.
And so
Yes.
Okay. So with the uh, um, when this first came out a couple of months ago, my question what's what's burning down? And and on that list, we have a couple of things from January, March, April and May. Um. So the the question was what is so critical other than than when you were in the office last week, some things came in. Um.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Flattable.
Could we, um, you mentioned March, way back in March, could we call a special meeting and actually sit down with our consultant, go over some of this with our consultant as a council? And direct them as to what is important, what isn't important, what we what residents really want, what they don't want. So that way we can all be on the same page. Because again, I think something needs to be done because we've got those sides, right? We've got we've got residents that are unhappy because um, there are we have ordinances and they they aren't being enforced on um, I U Ps, for instance, on some of the I U Ps, not all, some of them. We've got also.
That's a difference. That's not an ordinance. That's an I U P.
Sorry.
That's 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 a big distinction because the ordinance is do we understand what the ordinance is and do you understand you're violating?
Right.
Now, you see is here's your conditions and you're not meeting.
Right. So I guess what I'm saying is I think there's confusion as far as the code compliance thing. I think council is confused. I think staff is confused. I think I think our our experts on that are doing it are confused. So I think could we have a meeting with council with those experts and actually go through what our code compliance needs? Can we go through and say, this is what we expect, this is what residents would like, this is what we're hearing about I U Ps, about CUPs, this is what we would like. So we give direction, clear direction. Could we have something where in within that meeting, we talk to uh, um, Rum River about um, what we expect on certain on other code compliance on our ordinances and could we take those apart to say, this is what we want you to work on? This is what we don't want you to work on. This is what's this is what's pertinent right now because it's affecting certain people and this is not most pertinent. Because then I think we're all on the same page, staff, us and our experts and therefore our residents are happy because they're being heard. Um, our other residents are happy because they're not getting attacked. And um, and council and staff is on the same point. Is that a possibility? Would council be open to something like that?
That was my point because when when our, well, I'm just saying that we don't know that that any of the people working on this have ever got any idea what council wants representing our residents. So when when we were at a planning and zoning meeting earlier this year, our planner said she was working on changing ordinances from one section of the ordinance book to nuisance, so it'd be easier for Rum River to enforce. Okay, I don't know what those ordinances are, what direction they got to change it from here to here to make it easier for Rum River to enforce. But if if there's something that we need to understand about that, saying these are good ordinances and you want them enforced for this reason, or this is what Rum River does in other cities, therefore they should do it now then as well because it's easier for them to do it uniformly wherever they do it.
I don't think it's uniformly because I get phone calls to say this is our city because they're using cities from we have a city of four thousand people and or four, four to six hundred people. But the thing is, is what I'm saying is we don't have a city that's speed dyna. We don't have a city that is even Elk River. And so we can't apply those same things and yet a lot of our ordinances are applied to those sides of cities. And this is what's angering our residents. And so we have a lot to do, but um, and I have some RCEs coming to deal with that by next month. But the thing is, is this is an issue right now. So is it a possibility that we could get together at a sooner than later basis to meet with our experts, to meet with those to Rum River that we can point things out? Because I don't think at this point that anybody's going to be happy until we have clarity.
Well, and 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 to this, you know, we're we're asking our civil attorney. But typically code enforcement has always been through our prosecutor. So we're involving one attorney for something the other attorney is gonna have to enforce. And we're writing a new policy. It's one thing to say here's how often we find people, whether it's every seven days, every fourteen days, every month. And then here's how we collect those things. But I'm not exactly sure what these three individuals, these four individuals are gonna be doing because there's been no ex no communication from councils, what we'd like them to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Randall.
So I included our city attorney, um, Mr. Ruby, because we can't even get a bill from our attorney in this manner. Um, so. But I guess we've had more, this is triggered discussion and we've had more discussion on this. Again, everybody has it in the back of their mind that we need to do something. Nobody brought anything forward. I brought something forward. Let's have a conversation. I'd like to hear from staff. There are there are issues that they are getting calls from residents. There are, there are issues that they are getting calls from residents on. That the residents are upset that we're not adhering to our zoning ordinance, ordinances or I U P ordinances, our I U P, the rest of these. I'd like to hear steps in.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lane.
Well, their report they're looking at there is, it was asked to put together all complaints that have come through. So that has all complaints on it, not necessarily just was again, sent to Rum River. Uh, we've talked about all this money and spending a thousands of dollars and all that kind of stuff to put this together. I just want to level set everybody. Our city attorney was at one meeting. Okay. And so it was shut down and he was just looking over everything to make sure that we were.
Just, just to clarify, I would just say going forward, I, I'm not asking what's been done up to this point. I'm just saying.
I understand, but when this was shut down at one of the past council meetings, a comment was made. Who authorized you, city administrator, spent a bunch of money on this and hasn't been approved? And that's what I'm responding to.
So go forward. What's kind of, what's feedback you've been giving us?
So we have, so what was asked was, I'm not looking at reinventing the wheel. The existing code compliance letters and formats and all that kind of stuff that we have out there was being incorporated into what we were looking. We were working on a flow chart. If it, if it goes here, it goes to there. We got that. Um, Rum River from March 12th through June 10th, that we shut this down on June 12th, has spent nineteen hundred dollars on them. One meeting for our city attorney and there was very few, a couple of meetings for our, our, um, city planner. So we were trying to put something in place to be able to bring to the council and say, this is how we did it in the past. This is what we look at doing. We're not trying to make it a diner. We're not trying to make it in, Eden Prairie or Elk River, anything like that. They were not incorporating what they're doing in all other cities. They were helping us with a process, putting it in place that yes, I agree with you. If, if, if the ordinances aren't exactly where we want them, then we need to address the ordinances. But it was also stated in here by a council member not that long ago that said, when a code compliance issue comes through, we need to put a process in place, like when Scott would review and hand them off to Liz. We need to put a process in place that when Scott means it needs to go to somebody, we need to hand it on. Right now it's not being handed off. It's being put in the pot. And there's nothing, if, if I can't resolve it, it's not going anywhere at this point. Those are the ones, and I, and I cautioned the council when we had this conversation before that we should have the process in place before they start showing up. They're showing up now and I don't have the process to be able to take it. If you want to do that for a special meeting and have them run in, I told you guys, last night, we were close to having this resolved. I never thought for, uh, uh, for in a million years that I would be challenged on spending money with these folks putting code compliance in there. Before the project manager was on her time off, on her first six months, she started this process of working on it. Nothing was ever said at that time that we shouldn't be doing it. It's when that timeframe came, I kept, continued to keep working on it with these individuals while she was on that time off. And then when she came back, she was shocked that she wasn't part of it. And I don't know if she, who she talked to, may have talked to or whatever it may be, but then all of a sudden it became an issue. So here we sit today with no real process of code compliance. And we have people that are expecting us to be able to do something about their issues. And if, 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 if I can't resolve them, they're going nowhere.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Fladwell.
So you, Scott, you and I have talked in the past about a disconnect and I think that's part of the problem. I think when, and and forget me if I'm wrong, remember there was a meeting long, long ago where you said code compliance and then you were like, oh, sorry about code compliance because we kind of got off on different things. I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, I don't remember what happened.
Right. So what I'm trying to say is I think everybody is looking at code compliance and the problem is we're not getting directly into what the problem was. When I see, when I see something on here that makes me laugh, it's, it's like, and I'm not going to say it, but it's one of, it's, it's funny, but I understand that that's not code compliant. But there's other things that are kind of, we're not sure what we're talking about. We're not sure what it means. And so I would rather have a special meeting than to say, hey, let's do this. I want you to get the help that you need. I don't, and I want residents to be happy and get what they need. My problem is, is that we pass these things and then it comes back at us later because it hasn't been thoroughly thought through or, or we understood differently. We thought it through, but it wasn't quite what you meant. It wasn't quite what maybe Mary meant. And so then all of a sudden we have to come back to a meeting because it was like, oh, and we've done that. We've done that. Or we voted on something and we had to come back to it because we didn't understand it. So my caution here is that not to not get you the help. Not to have, not to give you the answer. I want you to get the answer. But I want the right answers and I don't want us to just vote, yes, we'll give you what you want, but then it turns out not to quite be what the residents needed. So again, I ask council, would it be better for us to get a date on, on the calendar? And get the definition of code compliance down in every category. So we, so you know who you're handing it off to. You know the direction of the council. You know what the residents want. You'll have answers for everything and we will too. Because otherwise we're just hitting heads and we don't know why. And that's, and, and that's a problem. We just don't know why we're hitting heads and we all have different definitions in our head of the same word and it, and it's driving me crazy. It's just like, when the manager said, well, that's the ordinance, that's ordinance. That's not code compliance. And I'm like, and yet it all comes under the same topic. So we have to do something with subcategories or something. I just, I don't know what to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Raino.
I believe Mr. Lane had just addressed that they were working on a flow chart. Again, not everything that's on this chart went any farther than that's northern ordinance or whatever that company is that blown up their bobs. Done. It's done. It's on here because it's a complaint. We asked them to track, like, no different things. So there's, it's not saying that little things like that are going to go any farther than staff responded.
Right. I know that.
Staff said they were working on a flow chart. I'd like to hear Natalie because she takes a lot of the calls. Um, and then I would move that we set a meeting. Again, we had this discussion in March. We had it one other time and nobody has brought anything forward to have a discussion as to what we want to do with it. And R C A has written does not mean that's what we agree on, but it brings up the discussion. We have this discussion and we make a decision. But in the meantime, our staff is dealing with this and it's unfair to our staff. Because we didn't get up. Mr. Mayor, Natalie can speak.
Hmm.
I do take a lot of those calls.
Hmm.
I've had two women in crying. We spent an hour and a half with another one and all I can say is I'm sorry. We don't really have anything in this to follow our, to follow up on the I U Ps or the C U Ps. We are the only city that doesn't have a code compliance. We are the only city that doesn't have a personnel policy. We are the only city that doesn't do a lot of things. There's no policies. And we talk about it, we talk about it, we talk about it. And Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but I'm kind of wondering why you need staff?
So, Mr. Mayor, can you keep moving this forward? Thanks for, thanks for having. I, I don't, I agree with Terry on, can we have Scott and the team finish putting together what they started and then put the date on the calendar that has the media pull in. Um, Shanny's concerns on, it's always easier to look at something in terror part than try to build what we think we want as we're moving. So I think we should have finish the proposal that they put together. We aren't starting from scratch. We used to have a process. We are going to add some tweaks to that process and deliver that and then see where that falls into some of the compliance issues that we have had and how that would work with the flow charts that we're putting together.
Any other discussion?
Mr.
Councilman Fladwell.
So clarity, I just want clarity. So what we're asking them to do is we're asking them, so I want them to play the two, we're asking them to put together what they want to do for code compliance. Is that what we're asking them to do?
I don't know. Are we asking them to create an ordinance?
This is what I, this is what, this is what I want to ask. I'm looking at this and what I'm seeing is.
What is, what is the process previously stated? Cause that's what the motion is here.
So, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, now I go. Did you take that?
No.
So Mr. Lee, our administrator has already started to work with our consultants using what we currently have in place. So they're not reinventing a wheel. They've had conversations about it. They're trying to put a flow sheet, flow chart together. And say if A is this, it goes to here. B is this, it goes to there. Again, we're not reinventing any wheel. We're using our existing procedure and determining how we're going to work with that. Because when that procedure was put in place, we had one person that did it. We now, we don't have that one person. It's got to be separated out by virtue of what is the issue? If it's an I U P, does that go to Rum River? If it's a C U P, does that go to Rum River or does it go to, to, to city, uh, to Cindy Nash? If it's a zoning ordinance or violation, those are already all documented as to what is, what is our zoning, what are our zoning ordinance? And is there a violation? Would that, those violations then go to Rum River? But we're trying to determine where the and act on them when they come in direct to the correct location, the correct organization that's going to be. But have them put, finish that flow chart using what we already have. Their input, their suggestions, bring it back to council and we can have that discussion.
And then I think it would be great to take a couple of these examples and run them through the flow chart.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So, but what we had heard before was you're talking about a flow chart. But I've heard, what I've heard is ordinance changes.
I'm not speaking to anything with ordinance changes.
Okay. But that's why the city attorney got involved because if the ordinance is going to be changed, he's going to enforce it. He wants to write the ordinance. Cindy Nash said it at a planning and zoning meeting, we're changing ordinances from this section to this section. So they're more easily enforced.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would add, uh, no zoning change, no ordinance, no moving of ordinances. We, everything is as of this.
So you're just asking for a, a process flow that says if something comes in, who takes it?
Hmm.
And then basically taking what Liz had had before. So my question would be if, as was sent out to us, Liz's process there. Why can't we just take that and do what council member Alder said and run these through that to test it? Because then we could say, who is going to do this? Cause we have the chart. We have the process. Scott sent it out to us. Process exists. It's only, the only question was who? Back in March, we said for now it would be Scott. And, and Scott's not going to be doing that. So who's going to be doing it? So if it's going to be, let's take the chart that exists and plug in Rum River. Because Cindy's not going to do it and Bob's not going to do it. And it gets to this point, then one of our attorneys will take it. But at this point, the chart says Scott does the first view and then they turn it over to, but that chart already exists. So I don't think we have to recreate that.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe that chart already exists. Everything went to Liz. We now no longer have that ability to say, Liz, you take this. We need to determine where it's going to go. And that is something I'm asking for our internal, our consultants to say, this is my expertise. This is my expertise.
But we, when the email that Scott sent out has that process flow in it from Liz. Here's how it goes from here. Here's one of the, this would result in this letter. This will result in this letter. This will result on the same page. That already exists. We have it in our units. And if that exists, why can't we use that and just say, it's no longer the planner? It's now somebody associated with our building official that fills, that does this part.
But so, Mr. Mayor, we don't have that part and that's the part we need to determine. And that's what I'm asking. How are we going to determine when John Johnson calls in and has a complaint on zoning, complaint on an I U P or a C U P? We've not, council has not given direction to Scott to say, go to Rum River, go to Cindy Nash, go to the city attorney. We need to give staff the ability to put together a, a procedure force to follow using what we currently have. And then council will determine if those are the appropriate places to direct that. And in the meantime, nothing is happening. And so we need to do something and we need to do it now.
So you're saying this would not be re, guiding new ordinances?
No, no.
Would not be relocating ordinances?
No.
We simply say, where's the flow chart and who does?
Get some suggestions from our consultants as to the best, best place for this to go to.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lane.
Part of that also was for all of you to be able to determine between letters. I think right now, well, documentation says fourteen days. That is totally open to discussion. Maybe you and council members don't think we were taking the letters that we have in conjunction with the letters Rum River used and, and tweaking them to make sure that they flow well. And then how do they flow through the flow chart to know that? So what does the handoff look like? They have a recording documents in their side that track all this stuff that we can get into at any time and be able to take a look at. So from a recording standpoint, reporting out the council, all that kind of stuff is there. Um, if I'm hearing the marching order, or at least the conversation, I'm hearing that no ordinance changes, keep the existing ordinances the way they are where they are right. And that'll be a different discussion down the road. What we want to talk about on this is that later day. We're just briefly talking process from handoff to finish to letters going out, just figure that process.
All of their existing process put into our current structure. Yeah. That makes sense.
Mr.
Councilman Fladwell.
So the current process, how often do letters go out right now? Well, in the current process, how did letters go out and how often and what was the determination on penalty on that?
That's amazing though. But it's, but it's also our whole process. And that's the reason why this was being looked at is because it was very inconsistent how it was being divvied out. Not all residents were being treated the same. And depending upon who may have had an issue, um, you may get a letter that says fourteen days, but you may never hear back from us for forty five days. So there was no consistency to that process. That's what we're trying to drive into.
And the assessments were all the board as well.
They worked. So then when we came to you at the end of the year, you guys made adjustments. Some people got assessed, some didn't. Some fines were reduced. It all depends.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Raino.
I think it's for a long time, we've had issues with how we do our code compliance and this is our opportunity to put a policy and a procedure in place. Works for council, works for the residents and works for the consultants that are handling their piece to it.
And I think the other piece that I always provide some clarity on, at least the upfront pieces, give it to a discussion because we had some issues with our prior team member. We go out for code compliance and it was all of a sudden it's everything that is available to look at in our whole city. And it was like, no. We want you to go out and look at, they had an issue with, I think I said it many before, too many boats. We're not talking about everything else. It's like, go look at, is there a number of excess vehicles in, in the place? We're not, we're not trying to get into every other. So.
This is going to be carte blanche.
Exactly. Is that frustrates people as well. Or, so.
And, and Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Raino.
This is like a council member Fladwell. If you have people, if you have residents contacting you about it, are ordinances that they think are more, uh, reflective of a diner, of a diner or Elk River, then that information needs to go to say to review that. If the needed is correct, then they need to bring that to council to say this was brought forward from a resident to the council member and these ordinances are, we need to look at them. This was brought forward from a resident to the council member and these ordinances are, we need to look at them. But, but at the same time, people don't like to be told what to do with their property. And so we, we, so we need to have a process in place.
I agree. I, I totally agree with process. I, I agree with putting ordinance co-compliance in. My just concern is stated that I think everyone needs to be on the same page and I don't think we'd have that. And I think what happens is we vote sometimes things in. It's kind of like, we don't, it's not that we don't read everything, but it almost feels that way sometimes, that we miss something. And so I want our experts and our staff and I want council to know what are in those folk, what we're doing all the time. And if we can have a meeting to go over that with experts, so that way we can even, so we have, all of us can explain to our residents what we're doing. And both sides, those that are happy I U Ps and those that don't, that are flashing that there's a way that we can be fair to both. That's all my concerns, so.
That is, oh, my last word on it. And also can say what they want, but I've spent many, many, many hours this summer working with residents, dealing with these same, and, and I don't wanna impugn our, our professionals. But the comments that are made about residents and their lack of professionalism or their lack of, of knowledge of things that these people know inside and out. It's been very disrespectful at times and very costly to the residents. They're saying, we know better. You should know better if you're going to try and build a house, try and divide a lot, or try and do something in the city. You don't know what we know. And, and I just don't want the code compliance to be somebody with more education or more letters behind their name or, or more cities that they represent knows better than the people who live here. And I'm just afraid that the council will be directed rather than giving direction because we haven't met with these people. And, and if the process goes beyond just the process, through the theory of why we do this, how we do it in other places. Rum River has a process in place that says we can track this in a way that much more consistently we're informed. The unintended consequences is there could be a lot of people. There could be a lot of people getting fined repeatedly if they don't respond quickly. And, and that's where the professionals come in and say, tough, those are the rules. That's the way we enforce it uniformly for everybody. And that's my concern because we haven't met with these people to say, here's how we'd like them to be run.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Reagan.
So by having them come back with the policy, having discussion, we set the direction. They can give us A to Z and we can pick just A to L or M to Z. They have to provide us something for us to look at. For us to try to put it together, it is never gonna happen. So we need to rely on people that have expertise in the field, bring that back to us. And then we determine what, what we wanted to look. We agreed upon what the existing policy is. We all, th- those that were on the council at the time agreed on that policy. Problem that we have with that policy is it wasn't enforced. It, the consistency, uniformality. We need to get a policy that council agrees on and determine how we want it done. And then we are directing it. The po, the, the consultants are.
And, and, and all I understand then, from what we're saying tonight, this meeting with the process to be presented to council was originally scheduled for June twelve. And was pulled back because for whatever reason it wasn't ready to June twelve. What we didn't know was that people had been directed to start redoing ordinances. Rum River, it was.
Okay, Mister Mayor, I, I, I don't wanna go farther. I don't wanna go back. I wanna deal with this. I wanna call the question that we direct the city administrator, work with the city attorney, planner, building official to complete the process they previously started. Regarding code compliance, which includes I U Ps, C U Ps, and report back to the council. And I can add that we have a meeting on it. We have a special meeting on it for this session. Yes. That's my motion.
Right. So we have a motion and a second. We've had our discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Shemir, can I speak to some more pieces of that? Even though you had a religious level set you.
Speak quick, Scott.
I just want, to, to give you guys, so I did a little work that, I know there was some co, uh, conversation and questions that were opposed to me about, uh, where were some of these funds and all that kind of stuff come from when we do that? Right now, I'm looking at Rum River Consultants' bill through the end of June. It said, uh, forty-six thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars. That actually includes January and February for Mint Spect in there also. And, uh, it is also pending the nineteen thousand dollars that council has put on hold to not pay Rum River Consultants until we were able to get some further information. I am very close to having that information all wrapped up. So I will have that back to the council at the next meeting to discuss. This is what we found out on the nineteen thousand dollars that we held up. So if you, if you add that nineteen thousand dollars in there, we're, we're right around sixty-five thousand dollars. And that's on a budget of a hundred and eighteen thousand. If you put the nineteen thousand dollars in there, we're at about fifty-five percent of the budget, uh, when it comes to that. I also talked to them about their dollar amount, the dollar amount, to be able to just, the overarching dollar amount is ninety dollars, but they bill a fifteen minute increment. So you're talking about twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. And there's a lot of that stuff that they were talking about with Coke coming, sending out a letter. Make whatever they need to do. That's fifteen to thirty minutes. It isn't always gonna be, it isn't a minimum charge of an hour just because they touched something. They bill us a fifteen minute increment. So I, I really believe that we have some room in that budget to be able to do some of the things that we're doing today without having to raise that much.
And, and that being said, understood as we said in the meeting the other day, that there's a, a net zero that if we plan on the building official charging this much and building permit paying that costs. So, well, it's, the building official cost is one thing. Code compliance isn't covered other than if fines come in. That's the only thing that goes against the code compliance charges. So the, the building official, when they're doing building official activities, other than the small percentage we get on some of the processing. All of that goes to, the permit pays the building officials. So that's a wash. Nothing pays code compliance except for tax dollars unless we levy fines. But that's not, that's never been budgeted from that.
Not from that, but it was in the budget when we paid our previous planner to be able to do it. It was in the wages that we paid her to do.
Right. And as we saw with previous planning, it was very sporadic and very occasional.
I agree.
This, this you've already said, they've got a, a robust system that will track this to the day, every day.
Yeah, to be able to give us reporting and all that type of stuff. That's what I'm referring to.
And as I'm just saying that, that, that being said, as we discussed in our budget the other day, we do not budget any money in this year or next year for code compliance enforcement. But that being said, we've taken a vote and we're gonna move on to full business. Anything on, uh, uncompliant properties? And so guys right into this whole question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just was looking at where you're at. Uh, no, but it's been nothing running in the attorney board.
So I would imagine that would be part of the, um, the process that we see here.
Well, it, Mister Mayor.
That's it.
It could be. Uh, some of the information that has been provided to me as we were talking about this, uh, by some people in this room, we're talking about, do we continue to use our prosecuting attorney or do we use our, our, uh, city attorney or civil attorney to be able to take a look at that? Because our civil attorney is versed in that and could be part of this process if we choose not to use our prosecuting attorney. So I think that is gonna be up for, uh, discussion. And you as a council, we'd be able to determine which way you guys wanna go with that, but we have options.
Are we still having problems with our billing on the prosecuting attorney?
We have been billed the second quarter right now.
All right. Uh, assuming nothing on ATV ordinance update? Uh, I actually, um, sprinklers?
I just, I reminded, I just talked to the, the Chris who's coordinating everything. And I reminded him and he's totally aware that he will, he needs to provide a schematic to the city when, when all of it's done.
Thanks, Mister Mayor.
Sir, along those same lines, I did hear from Chris today. He did reach out. I have not. We were prepping for the meeting, so I didn't get a chance to get to him. Uh, but he's asking for keys to the garage. And he's asking for some help in possibly getting locates on the ground so we know where the underground is. So last night, I haven't heard from him. Today, I heard from him. So I will get back to him tomorrow. We'll start that process.
All right. Uh, cannabis ordinance discussion.
Mister Mayor. Um, as we talked about, it was last month, um, we wanted, I, I wanted to confirm with Representative Novotny that we did need to report and the mortgage and be extended. Um, and he did confirm that that was the case. So we do have to come up with something. And it appears that every city has to do something in some way, shape or form, um, based on, um, the, the different options provided by the state to, um, to have some sort of, that's why, sorry. So every city has to do something. There's different license types from a full-blown micro business all the way down to, uh, cultivator, cultivator manufacturer, wholesaler, et cetera. Um, and so, I mean, I was just thinking about this, since we do have to do something, I would um, recommend us, not necessarily for discussion, um, not necessarily getting, getting into having retail. Of course, ordinances can always be changed, um, since we, but since we are a climate farming community, I would think if anything minimally we could focus on, um, those, um, types of uh, options where you get into like cultivator or just something like that, even if we just, that just, if we have to have something, then that would be one thing to start. Or basically they can grow it and package it, but that's all they can do. And they have to actually sell um, to another business or to be distributing, so.
That's my pleasure.
So verifying that as far as can, if we have to do something and your idea about letting someone grow it and package it and sell it, can we limit the number? Like if we allow any number, a limit the number of licenses? Cause can we say one farm, four farms, ten farms, whatever? Can we do that?
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Reagan.
There are, um, let's, let's hear, there are stipulations on what you, um, local governments may not issue outright bans on cannabis business or limit operations in a manner of, you know, on what is provided by state law. So it's gonna be dictated by state law. So, uh, there has to be, with retail endorsements, um, at least one retail for twelve hundred and fifty, twelve thousand five hundred residents. Um, except there, yeah, so there is all. That's a twelve thousand.
One retail for twelve.
But, but it also is, the county could be picking that up. So we may not have to have them here because there's enough in county to hit that average.
Okay. There are also talks about, um, so like for the, for the cultivating of it, um, I think if those, those, somebody that wanted to cultivate it already had to file with the state and get approved by the state for cultivation, unless I'm reading that wrong. So if nobody in now then, if, if, if I am correct, and I am not saying I am, um, if I am correct in what I remember reading, the state has to determine whether or not you can be a cultivator. And they give you the license to do that. And then we, we have to allow that. But if nobody in now then has done that, then we wouldn't have anybody.
But there's nothingness to say at this point, whether like, I mean, you know, people that have five acre minimums. So everybody can do it. Is, I mean, that's what I'm saying. So if everybody applied for a license, do we have to allow it all? I mean, can we limit it?
Well, and that's, we have to do a zoning, we have to do a zoning ordinance. But what my memory tells me is that in order to do that, you already had to have been licensed by the state. They, I'm trying to, so.
No, I just.
I'm trying to, I thought I read in here that they already know by the end of this month, maybe they will know if they are gonna be licensed by the state. To cultivate. And then, and then that cultivation would have to adhere to whatever ordinance we but, but whatever ordinance we go then.
And then as far as retail, you have to allow them to.
If it isn't covered under the, the county doesn't take it, it's not.
Okay. Does that have to be a permanent retail? Or can it be something like?
There are de- definite license types. So there's an advantage depending on what people have for that too.
Yeah, okay.
There's also, you read through, there's also buffer guidelines. It could be within five hundred feet of a lap, but it could.
Yeah, so they couldn't do it here. Okay.
But it could be one or other. Where's the other business areas? So we'd have to look at what's that look like? Or where, where will we allow retail?
What if all of our retail is right next to a baseball field? Then we can get out of that? I don't.
I don't know. I'm just saying, I look at the buffer guidelines, but most of our retail area is right behind the ball line. So I would say that wouldn't, uh, wouldn't be allowed.
Mister Mayor. Yeah, but also in those buffer guidelines, it's five hundred feet from a daycare. And so you have to make sure that there's some daycares by that. And the residential treatment facility or an attraction with, with a public park that is regularly used by minors, pretty big playgrounds and outlets. And that takes care of a lot of, right now, that big time.
It takes care of this retail base here up by the beach of Ford North. Further down, but.
Mister Mayor. Councilmember Ryan.
At, at least I know, I'm pretty sure I'll put that in, you know, we're none of us in town, town council are experts, but since we can have an idea. Um, I was at least thinking, we have some sort of recommendations or what we're type of, type of things that we're looking for to, to at least have, if the, since we have to put something together to at least get the process started. Um, at least I think that's within enough for, um, we, I, I think the draft ordinance that they provided, they've ended up a bit for now then. So at least that, 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 um, time and space work should be relatively done. And it's just a matter of making whatever other changes that need to be made to, to to get some sort of minimum, um, ordinance in place. And so that would, I, I think that's at least the plan that we can use going forward. If people at least say, hey, let's just try to stick to the cultivator manufacturer aspect and not necessarily have to add in the retail. We don't need to, assuming St. Francis or Ramsey or whoever, all more than likely gonna have some of that. We could probably hit that population and then we can move forward if it gets done. That's at least my opinion.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Reagan.
Um, and on page eighteen of the packet, um, local governments must conduct compliance shifts with cannabis and cannabis businesses. Holding retail registration with at least once per calendar year. So that should be included in whoever, sure, who's gonna do that.
More unfounded man.
Mister Mayor.
Sir.
So just so I'm clear going forward, do you feel confident, Councilmember Ryan, that, uh, you, you, are you planning on staying plugged into this and running this? Or is this something we wanna hand off to our professional that approached us a couple of months ago and said she was gonna put together something like this for it? Did you, do you want us to use what you put together and then her take it to work together?
I wasn't planning on working together on this anymore. It was a matter of doing the research to see what we had to do, if we did have to do anything. Okay. And I just literally did a copy paste through that. If that, if it's not gonna work, then okay. But I was, we're gonna have to have.
But then I would like clear direction on exactly what this council wants for the cannabis bill because a couple of months ago, when we were talking about it, she was very worried about making the deadline by January first, knowing that it wasn't gonna be extended. You did the research and I commend you for it and thank you for doing that. But I need clear direction from this council on where do we go with the cannabis bill and who's do, do you want me to get with her then and get an ordinance put together? Where are we going?
I think, don't we have to decide?
I think, don't we have to decide what?
Senator Flavio.
On Scott's point to give them clear direction, do we have to decide what we want as a council? And, you know, first, so that they can act their direction. So do we want a retail store? Do we want, I mean, do we have to go?
I think we need to, I don't let any of us understand what.
No.
What's, what we can and can't do.
Right.
So I think, I would say, I, I, I don't wanna be touched on. That might not be the choice for giving.
Right.
Given.
But could we see, how do we find out? And maybe that goes to her then. May, how do we find out exactly? Because this isn't even enough information. I mean, so, because I don't think they have made enough of the decisions yet, the state. So what I'm saying is, I want them to get clear direction on what does council want. So therefore, I mean, if we don't wanna retail store, we should just tell them that. If we don't want these things, then we should tell them that. So then, when our expert is going through making up that ordinance and checking with the state, that we can have that ordinance for whatever we need to be clear. I just.
So which of the thirteen?
That's.
Right, so, so that's why I've, I've been trying, start trying to go, which of the thirteen do we wanna just say that we wanna focus? Do we wanna say to get a minimum ordinance done? We hit the cultivator, cultivator, and that's it? And, and, and if, if, and then that's what we're gonna do, and if it comes back that that's not gonna work, then we're gonna have to make modifications to it. But that at least is start.
Yes, but let me ask you this. Are there any of these thirteen that, do we have to allow?
Microbusinesses.
Any of them? Can we just say we don't want any of these licenses? Which is easiest way of saying, there's thirteen licenses and we'd rather not have any of them licensed now. If not many is around us, they can, just like we drive to the neighboring community via a road.
That's another way to write a more, to, to not have a moratorium, but have, but have a moratorium.
Well, we have, we have an ordinance.
Right.
If it's, if it's allowable, then I'd allow any of the thirteen. And our ordinance should say we don't. If they're saying you have to, have to allow it, now let's find out what the minimum is. And, and then write an ordinance around that, saying if this is, if we have to have a minimum of allowing these, how do we, how do we do that?
Well, knowing that we don't have the expertise to do that, then that's something that we're gonna have to have someone do. And I would hope that that would be for our planner to write up a term. The council's direction would be to see if we can write up the ordinance that doesn't allow any of the thirteen, but we had to pick, if we had to pick one, then we start with cultivator and go from there.
I second that.
So we, we would allow people to grow cannabis at their, at their residence.
Under the, excuse me.
Under the.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, whatever has a law by state statute. So page ten, first paragraph, local governments may not issue outright bans on cannabis, cannabis business or limit operations in a manner beyond what is provided by state law. So I don't know if there's anything within state law that gives us enough to do with. But that's, it's the need, that's.
Right, so if you go through that, each one of these license types, is there?
Yeah.
I, I don't know what that means.
Well, we go, how about this, so for instance, it's an ordinance that doesn't allow cannabis businesses to be by certain things. If all of these follow under some of those things, if we have ordinances that say, I'm trying to see, maybe we already have ordinances that already disallow some, this one, oh, alright. Well, I'm not, I'm not. But basically.
What do you order this to get around cannabis?
So the name, the difference, we don't have a cannabis ban of it. We've gotta get our ordinance in place before the office even set up at the state, which is, which, yeah.
Right.
But I don't know that I, you know, like Dan's comment on someone that's going to grow it, it's like, if that's what they wanna do on their five acres and they have the resources to do that, it's like.
Right.
I'm not trying to not have somebody make living, I just.
I agree.
I'm a little bit like, I don't really wanna see a store pop up next to Bill's, it's open twenty-four seven.
I agree, I agree.
So.
So.
Yeah.
So maybe we, so is that kind of what we can do then? Can, like what Dan said? Would that be, cause that would be a more clear direction than for you, right? If city doesn't actually search all the businesses, then she would just to look at.
So the direction is that should be for each one of these license types, what is the state law say we have to do versus, uh, what we can, if it's state laws, it's saying, there's no way you can not allow this to come in, then what are we gonna do?
Right.
And I honestly don't know if any, if it's like retailer, manufacturer, wholesaler type, then what is all this?
So what you're saying is, we might have to allow all the licenses.
I, I honestly don't. The one, the one, I mean, look at the first three. On page thirteen. Yeah. Municipal considerations, first thing on each of those three is older. If you're aware, the one area in town, I guess, was being grown previously, you knew it. You, you didn't wanna be on that five acres next to it. And insecurity, obviously.
Well, that's the other thing, what if?
This is not feeling watermelon.
Is there a consideration in state law that has to do with neighboring neighbors and things like that? Not necessarily this, but with other considerations, so can any of those then be used? I just think we're opening a big can of worms in it.
When we come over the, the legislature open that, it may have.
Yeah, I know.
And, and, and like I say, the unfortunate thing is they can't answer that because they don't have an office. But what, what they were intentional is, is, is very, obviously did not want to be restricted. You know, so they're saying you just, here's all the things you can't be restricted on. So if, if it's a, invite, you know, it violates your neighbors, too bad. That's same thing I'm doing with the housing bills. They were taking away even the, the ability for the council to have a hearing on it, for the neighbors to file a complaint with the type of housing that would be going in next year. Well, this is a similar thing where they're saying, here's all the things you can't do to restrict it.
So basically, we could possibly be giving an I U P and we could have a group of neighbors in there saying no, and we would still have to say, so. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Let me take a stab at this and see if this, what you guys are looking. Hey, take the information that's been presented to us tonight. I will get with our planner, who does this, for others, under the understanding that we don't want anything in this city that we aren't required to have, and, and at a minimum, we wanna do what the minimum is, be able to be in compliance before January one of twenty twenty-five. Put together that ordinance, bring it back to all of you. We'll tear it apart and do whatever we need to do or make adjustments and, and Sydney can explain, you know. I, cause I know there's some things that she's aware of that has been coming down that she's been keeping up to speed with, and I think she'd be valuable asset to be able to put this together, then we'll bring it back to council, once we get it done. No, we're under a pretty tight timeline here, just a few last minutes.
And if we have.
That sound reasonable?
Senator Flavio.
And if there's one, if we would rather have the company.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, yep, I got that too, I wrote that down. That seem reasonable to everybody then? You wanna get more informed with that?
That was good, eh?
Okay.
My motion. Alright. Okay, so that's Dan's motion. Councilman Flavio, we need the second. A motion from, uh, Dan as expressed by the administrator to get direction to the planner. And, uh, seconded by Councilman Flavio, any others? Seeing and hearing that, I'll go and pay, signify by saying aye. Vote. Motion carries. Alright, and then, uh, so last thing on there, has anybody had any issues with the action items from the previous meeting?
And what?
Issues with the action item. Sorry that there's so many, definitely have to try to count them somehow, so. Just in the, uh, July ninth, the last sentence, uh, schedule a work session at the work session. Tuesday, July sixteen, so everyone's been in calendars, completed July twenty-eighth, driving state of the data meetings, that's supposed to be August.
It was supposed to be, then we moved it. The twenty-eighth, that is the work session for the neighborhood.
On June seventeenth, they did deliver the E O P to the United County. They are working on an update, and training wouldn't be scheduled until E O P is presented and approved by council. But they would be, uh, willing to work on the tabletop for this for urgency planning, training for the entire council and staff.
Mr. Mayor.
Man.
Do you want that kept on the action lines?
Uh, it's been completed, so.
Well, I mean, the.
Yeah, the, the, the training is, is up to the county. Other cities are, you know, it's something they schedule like a year in advance. Waiting for them to do.
But we don't have any idea, I think, right? Tell them the E O P is gonna be completed at this point, right?
They were converting it to a Word document, and then they were gonna review it compared to what they had recently had approved, according to. Anything else? Alright. See that, then we take a motion to adjourn. A motion and rules.